Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is Knox County Board of Commissioners. Meeting on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Our first order of business to is to have the bid opening for the Knox County Sheriff's Office. Maintenance building project. And so we have a few guests that are here. And we will be opening the the packages as part of the bid opening. People at home may not realize that that it's an official. A meeting in which everyone who is in attendance needs to to sign in. And so once I finish this and Commissioner Casse signs. Then we will go through the process of opening the the bids. Okay, Commissioner Lester, you want to hand me the first one and tell me who it is?
Sure. This is. Chamberlain Group Inc.
It looks like we have about six of them. So so Chamberlain Group Inc. And this is for the maintenance building project, which is a project that's. That will help the sheriff's office to be able to have. Their items that are in storage to be better preserved and protected.
Better evidence.
Yes, the evidence. Okay, maybe it's probably the last seat which I haven't got to yet. First and typically is the hardest to figure out, though, with no tab in here.
I think it's on the second page.
You think it's the second page? Oh, yeah, I've seen all these zeros on here and I'm not seeing the bit. So, okay. Yeah, so here's the the bid for Chamberlain Group Inc. Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
This will be from Knox Concrete Construction.
So Knox Concrete Construction. Their bid is four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
This will be Satterland Building Company.
So Satterland Building Company. Their bid is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Four hundred and seventy-four, seventy-nine. So it's four seven four zero seven nine.
Modern Builders.
Modern Builders bid. Is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Adina Corp.
And this is our last bid from Adina Corporation. Their Adina Corporation's bid is four hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Four hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So those are the bids that have come in. We will hand those over to our architect. They will review those bids. Make sure that all the criteria that's referred to then is active. And then we will then announce the award that did. Once that homework has been done, we we thank all those that have submitted it. Always appreciate that that people often to help out taxpayers and their families. Thank all of you being there and everyone signed in, correct?
This one was received all part of the bids or qualifying bids and the low bidder is Modern Builders. So we will verify that. And if there's any problems, we work away from the bottom up. But if not Modern Builders, you'll be contacted within the next following days for next steps.
Yeah, so thank everyone for that. And then we do have a bid opening in a minute. It's at ten forty and that bid opening is also for the Knox County Sheriff's Office. And that's for the jail security system retrofit project. Do we have? And that one, that's just the envelope that that other one came in. That just changed that with that one. We have two bits in.
Yes.
Okay, so then we concluded the the bid opening for the maintenance building project. Now we will do open up for the bid process for the jail security. System retrofit project. And the first one we have is on.
The first one is CNA Surety, Jaren Hopps.
Okay, CNA Surety. And again, this is for the retrofit project. Okay. Don't make me work for it again. I spoke to plan and equipment. Okay, here it is. The total bid price is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Three hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. That's for from CNA Surety.
Our next one is from Security Automation Systems.
Okay, Security Automated Systems. And let's see how to work through this one. From the back. Okay. Okay, bye. So the bid from Security Automated Systems is one hundred and fifty-six thousand. One hundred and fifty-six thousand. The estimate on that. And then you have that handy, the estimate on that.
I didn't have an estimate for it. I thought it was like.
I was thinking it was one.
But it was one fifty, if I remember was it? Yeah.
I know for sure, but I'm pretty sure it was one fifty.
Yeah.
So we had just the two bits for that. And.
As I'll take those, Penny knows you'll keep giving me and all the sheriff's office. Birth.
But those will be reviewed and and then we will work. That, assuming everything that was done.
Why?
Okay.
Yeah.
So Jay's.
Business?
Yes, we are.
All right. So we have a resolution on her Pam Schaefer. For forty years of service to Knox County. This she's was longtime employee in the honor's office and she's been serving as well in the H R department. And she's this forty years and still going strong. So we're we're gonna. Present these to her and Laura on to Thursday. Once Penny gets the resolutions up and.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favor say aye.
Aye. And then we also have for Laura Webster, for thirty years of service in Knox County nine-one-one. Motion to approve.
Seconding.
Those favor say aye.
Aye. We have recognize and commend Kathy and Dave Daniels as the Ohio District Five area on agency. Their area agency outstanding senior citizens of the year for Knox County.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll have those all ready for Thursday. Authorize the board of elections to dispose of obsolete and no longer required voting equipment. Um, this is just a normal process, but before they can get rid of anything. It has to be approved by you and then they'll send us motion to approve whole books.
I second it.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
That will require all three signatures on that back page there. Okay, then we have approve a real estate purchase contract with Thomas Hoffs for top for the property located at twenty-two. Zero, zero, zero for shopping now near Howard, Howard, Ohio. And the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And then authorize the county administrator to execute all documents necessary to complete the transaction. This is, as you're aware, this we've been, I think, looking for. At least three years for potential property for future. Movement of the water wastewater administrative office down to get it down near Apple Valley where. I think thirty-five hundred of our five thousand customers are locked in and get it closer to the to the plant. And so we have looked and looked and looked and we have found a parcel that was for sale. And so Jeff has. He's excited about that. And then to potentially in the future then. Put a building on this, a small building on this site for administrative offices. That would that portion would come out of the water wastewater funds. This portion, the purchase of property would come out of the county general fund as county commissioners would own the property. Yeah.
Second. Those favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think this only will require just first we'll signature on the back page. And the next one we have is to approve the real estate purchase contract addendum number one with the Knox County Land Realization Corporation known as the land bank. For property known as vacant Knox County Transit Parcels. Of six oh one West Chestnut, seven Norton and five oh one West High. So these can then also authorize the county administrator to execute all documents necessary to complete the transaction on your behalf. These are the three parcels that we had originally acquired through the land bank to build a transit center. Now that we have found a much more cost-effective way of having a transit center down there. We are gonna sell these back to the land bank or. Our credit for what we paid for this. So to kind of expedite it while we're waiting to actually. Purchase the warehouse because we're letting the using grant funds to demo the inside of that. And then we will purchase it. This would allow us to basically go ahead and do these vacant parcels back to the land bank. And then they'll hold a credit in escrow for us to put it towards the purchase we're doing of the warehouse. So we've we've agreed to purchase the warehouse for one point one million with three hundred and sixty thousand in credits. Um, we'll actually do a purchase price of seven hundred and forty thousand. And so this basically, there's no money changing hands on those credits. But they'll hold the credits in escrow for us until we close and I'd say probably. Late September, early October, we'll close on that. So this expedites that so they can start to find buyers for those three parcels.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Those favor say aye.
Okay.
Okay, and that just requires Commissioner personal signature on that one. And then we have approved the proposal for Side Street Studios, which is Josh Comey that was just in here. And this is for Design Documentation Services for the Transit Warehouse Facility. It's seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This also includes all of the engineering that's required from eight bad work. The electable that he pays for all of that through his contract. We don't pay for those services. He does. And so this is to get us through the state process and get approval for. Plans that continue forward with that project.
This is a funny question.
Yes.
Do we put bids out for these design work? Are we just choosing?
This one, since it's under the bid threshold, if it's over seventy-seven thousand dollars, we have to bid it.
All right.
And so on this one, we kind of chose to work with Josh based on just prior. Experience and what he's done for us. We, since his price was under the bid amount, we can award that to him.
Okay, good to know. Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favor say aye.
Aye.
That just requires one signature. We have a utility permit for Licking River Electric on North Liberty Road. Near Frederick County Amy Road and Shady Lane in Pike Township. Motion to approve.
Seconding.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have approved a utility permit looking for electric again, Frederick County Amy Road, west of North Liberty Road in Pike Township.
Motion to approve.
Second. Those favor say aye.
Aye.
You know, the last thing we have is to prove the forty contract between. Off County Performing Job and Family Services, Child Support Enforcement Agency and the Knox County Sheriff's Office. For to purchase services for the effective administration and support of this program. This, so I think Penny had put on your agenda. So there's a part of this that's non-federal share and then local share. Um, this basically runs the. What's the term we were using, Penny? It's.
Work seek.
Work seek or seek worker. Yeah, so where the D F S uses deputies and they. Were to do that for child support enforcement. So it's a, that's been a very successful program. And this is the contract for the year.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Those favor say aye.
All right. And that will require all three of your signatures. The total amount. It's the total. Here's the local piece.
We do have a correction on the jail security system retrofit. The company. That was first read is not CNA Surety. That is basically just a letter from CNA Surety. With the insurance in the bottom for A E Security Group. The actual bid came from A E Security Group, not from CNA Surety.
Yeah, good, good correction. So. Let's say that again.
The A E Security Group.
A E Security Group is who we had for the.
The CNA Surety is basically the bond information for that business.
And then before we turn that over to Kyle here, just a couple of things to enter in the record. The sheriff provided the meal report for the month of July. There were two dollars and one cent per meal. Meals prepared was eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven seals. Or into that into the record. The treasurer provided the depository and investment income statement for the month of July as well. And the month-to-date revenue was one hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents. So order that into the record. And then. The Ohio Snap Ed just provided you with their quarterly, you know, a snapshot for twenty twenty-five. April through June, they had thirty-nine programs taught. There were five hundred and seventy-six participants. So they were just airing it to the journals of the internet. And I'll pass those down to and sign those up here leisure. I'll get started.
You're welcome, Kyle. Yeah, we have Kyle Webb with us from our IT department. Thank you, sir.
Yes, go ahead. Well, since the last report, we've tackled several projects. One of them being we have implemented a cloud backup solution for our servers and data. Uh, this is in conjunction as an additional backup method. So we're we're still using our previous backup methods as well, but we've added another layer. Utilizing the cloud. So we have one more protection against any kind of ransomware or other cyber incident. So we have that implemented. That is always good to have something that's very. Easily accessed off-site if something natural disaster, whatever struck in the area. We also, we have the server room, the generator power has been installed to the second floor. That's that thing to tear up along with the battery backup units installed on the second floor. So all those systems are covered and protected against a power loss. Which we will sleep better at night with. We hired an I T support specialist. Tanner Burgess is our new I T support specialist. He's upstairs. He started a couple of weeks ago. He's doing a great job. We're happy to have him on board. Uh, we have completed the rollout for multi-factor authentication for email across the county. Uh, so that has pretty much been completed. I think there might be one or two people that still. We have to finish up with, but mostly rolled out. So that definitely protects us on the. Email side of things a lot better than we were before. We work with, we had leads in here, the state. Last week when we did an audit with them and nine-one-one.
You want to define what leads is for those who are wise.
Yeah, leads is for law enforcement. Their data access is through leads. Uh, so everything, whenever they run license plate, I D, any of that runs through the lead system. So you have to meet certain secure requirements in order to have access to criminal justice information or C K I, as they call it. Um, so we ran through the lead audit with them. Usually, I think they did, they said it is every three years. They do an input or they have a an audit like that. And the person was onsite. I guess last time it was digital. I don't. I didn't recall when we did it. It must have been during right after COVID there. So they had a person onsite. We, it was a couple hours long. We went out with nine-one-one, worked through the audit. A few things. That we need, just a few edits here and there of policies and things, just to match up a little bit better with the state policy, nothing major. Um, and they let us know what the requirements are going to look like for the next audit. Uh, what things will be required in the future. So we're gonna have to start thinking of ways that we can implement these new security. Pop policies and procedures now. So we're prepared for when those get enacted. Uh, so all, I have some thoughts about how we can achieve those. And we're already ahead of the game on several things with them, but just a few things that we need to add. Uh, we also did an audit, the Secretary of State's office for the board of elections. Uh, they did an audit as well. Uh, we completed all of our end of that. Uh, we haven't gotten much back from the state in response to that. So we'll see if they have anything to say, but we fully compliant with them. Uh, ongoing projects, we still have more computer replacements. We added the prosecutor's office here. We replaced all the computers. Um, the city still has some computers to install. So. Getting those all finished up, though, our stack, our backlog has gotten much smaller. We were down to a handful of systems. So we're happy, we're happy to be a little lesser on on that.
So Kyle, I take it everything on rotation system to replace.
Yeah, yeah, five years is generally our replacement strategy. We've changed that a little bit because when I started here almost six years ago now. Most of the computers need are replaced at that time. So what we're trying to do is trying to stagger the replacements. So some were replaced at four, some five. We're trying not to do many at six, but. That way we're not every five years having a huge payout. So we're trying to stagger that a little bit more. So we're not. Having all that expenditure at once. So. We ongoing projects, we have some other network equipment that we need to move to battery backups, but those weren't. Uh, those aren't super mission critical, but those are on the list to get installed. So password, the change tool, I I believe we we discussed this a little bit maybe last time. Uh, but this was actually something identified by leads as something that will be required in the future. And that will be basically taking your password that you have for your computer and checking it against. Um, online databases to see if that password's been leaked or compromised in a breach. That'll be something that the state will require. It's something we were already looking at deploying on our end. Um, so I have some quotes for that, but what's nice about it is. Uh, it switches from passwords to passphrases. So you'll be required to have. It's like a twelve-character password, but generally what you do is you'll do like a phrase. So if it's your lyric from your favorite song or a lyric from your favorite book or poem or something. That that's what basically everyone's switching to is phrases, sentences. Uh, the difference between an eight-character and a twelve-character password or passphrase is significant when it comes to hackers trying to get in. Um, like an eight-character can be broken pretty quickly nowadays. A twelve or sixteen can take hundreds of years at the current computing technology to break. So just changing that a little bit can make a big difference. But with that, you would be able to have it set so our passwords would only have to change once a year as opposed to every ninety days. Which is nice. And it'll tell you immediately, you know, the it'll check and see if. Uh, your password's been compromised somewhere. It'll make you change it the next day. So that's really nice. It's very proactive. Um, and and it makes sure that your password that you do use isn't something that's overly simple. Um, so it'll have like banned words, basically that are just too, if you have password in your password, it's not gonna. It's gonna not gonna let you use that or you can actually put phrases in there like. You wouldn't probably want to have Knox County in your password because we're Knox County. So there are certain phrases and things like that. It'll check for and be like, okay, pick something different. So those are something we're looking at. It's actually, it's not as expensive as you would think it might be. Uh, so I I believe it was something around fifty, a hundred dollars a year. It's not, it's not terrible.
That'll cover every employee.
Yeah, that'll cover every employee in Knox County. So that, I just got a quote for that last week. So we're, we're gonna test that out on a few systems and see how it works for us. I actually ran into that company when we did our cybersecurity conference in Phoenix. And it's, so that was. A nice chance to run into them there. Um, we begin discussions about firewall replacements. So our firewall. Um, will hit its five years in spring of twenty-six. And so that'll, that'll need to get replaced. Uh, so we're looking at a couple of different companies, options for that. And along with, you know, things have changed a lot in the last five years, especially when it comes to remote access. What was cutting edge five years ago in remote access and security. Um, has now been kind of becoming more obsolete and they're trying to phase that out. So we're looking at what our options are going forward. We've been working with the city on their city hall move. That has been, we did a walkthrough of the C O T C building. Two weeks ago or last week, hard to keep up anymore. Um, so we have started putting together a plan on our end of what the city will need to do to make that happen.
That's gotta be pretty in-depth, doesn't it?
Yeah, luckily the building that they're moving into is already set up very well on the networking side of things. So a lot of it's just equipment and plugging in existing infrastructure into that. Thankfully, it could have been a lot worse if you're going in a completely new building, putting up a bunch of balls, needing to rewire everything. That would get very complicated very quickly, but with them just retrofitting that existing building, I don't think it'll be too bad. Uh, so I'm actually working with Spectrum later today and doing a walkthrough with them on getting fiber services. Set up so the city can be connected. They're, they're still looking at, you know, fall this year or so for that. So we're, we're planning as if it's happening sooner rather than later so that we're ready or not to hold up. We have been working with the city too on their phone system cleanup. We've got some of that already taken care of. I have not heard any updates on the city agreement renewal for twenty-six. I have not heard any updates on the city agreement renewal for twenty six. Uh, but again, we still have some time for that. And then continued updates to security monitoring controls, that's obviously something that's. Comes up, especially with the leads audit and you know, these password tools, it's something that's always on our plate. Uh, the life-size camera placement for sheriff's office, um, something we ran into when we did the walkthrough with COTC that we hadn't. Seen before, they actually had a room that was set up in their uh, in the basement over there. And they had a, it was either fifty five or sixty five inch television, but it had a, a camera built into it and it was touchscreen. And you could, it was basically all set up for zoom, so you could start a meeting and everything just through the TV, just tapping on the screen. Um, very simple, easy to use. It would work very well for the video arrangement system that we've been looking at for uh the jail and the courthouse. So we're exploring down that road, wasn't as expensive as I thought it would be uh for something like that. So that's something we're, we're exploring, uh, but might be a, an easier system and less. Less equipment involved in the whole process and the simpler, the uh, the better. For that, because you don't always want to have to have someone from IT over there for every video arrangement, um. Want to make it as easy to use as possible. And then sheriff's office fact system, I haven't, um, I haven't heard anything from our fiber provider on that, but. Um, it hasn't been something that's been.
And the reason we're keeping the fact system is people still think that's a secure way to send stuff.
It's still Ohio, uh, the laws regarding um the transmission of that. Facts is grandfathered through uh the email security part, now everyone has the email security that's required to receive. Criminal justice information and encryption and all that, um. While our side is, we don't know what the receiver, so it's just easier to use faxes at this point, which is. Kind of wild, but it is.
Yeah, no.
It is what we're working.
Security does in fact sometimes doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
It was laying on the machine, you know, and.
Yeah, which becomes. It's a different take on security and we kind of run, run into that here. Well, in, in general with IT, is a lot of the security uh previously was all about physical access.
Right.
Um, so like the fax idea was, you know, someone could grab it off the, the, the printer. The security from that isn't as big of a concern now, it now it's more or less uh someone remotely accessing it. Hacking, so someone from China. It, well, you would all, you would need physical, you would need some physical access, you would have to somehow interrupt that phone signal and get. A copy of it, you would have to have some onsite physical presence for that, same thing with. Um, you know, people complain, uh, have, you know, if someone had their password under their keyboard. Okay, that's not good, obviously, but someone still have to have physical access and presence, so you, you already have a physical security problem that's already happening. Um, but that. Having a complex password written on your keyboard is probably better than having an easy password that someone then from China, Russia. Um, somewhere outside could then use to access your systems. So it's kind of a pivot of, we were concerned more about physical on-premise security. Now shifting to, most of our concerns have shifted to outsiders. Um, so that's where facts kind of. Still exists as being better, is that you almost have to have that physical presence where if it was emailed. If you didn't have the proper email security and someone were able to get your account, they could access that from anywhere and wouldn't need a physical presence for that. So it's just where our attacks are coming from, they're not as local anymore, now they've become international.
It's not the enemy within, it's the enemy outside.
Yeah, yeah, and you still have the enemy within, obviously, that's still a big problem, you have disgruntled employees. Previous employees, those kinds of things that we always have to look out for, you have things like uh social engineering, uh where. Uh, someone that works internally could be convinced to give out information, those kinds of things are very real, but. Um, you know, the outside hacking and uh penetration is. You know, kind of the, the bigger uh concern, so it's interesting to see how things shift in the world of IT and security. Uh, back and forth, so. We're just doing what we can with what we have, so uh you guys have funded us very well and. Uh, we've got really good security systems in place, the, the leads uh person gave us all kinds of credit for. Uh, the systems that we already have in place and that we've been forward thinking, so. Uh, I, I appreciated that, it's always nice having, you know, we think we have everything set up, but it's nice to have. Some external uh input and reinforcement that we're doing what we need to be do, uh, need to be doing to a secure system.
Something for us knowing we have some young men who know what they're doing, be given the bill and I had to do it. Yeah, you guys bring comfort to the arena, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Barry and I trade floppy disk every now.
Uh, it, it's sometimes, we, we were discussing a week ago how when I was in middle school, we had to say all of our work on the floppy disks. And sometimes you come in to your computer lab and you grab your floppy disk out, put it in and it's corrupted and you're like, oh, I gotta redo all that work. And then some of the newer guys on our team, they never use a floppy disk and it's like, oh, man. I, now I'm starting to feel the age on.
You talk, you talk floppy disk, I type microfiche. You should put those plastic things.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Rachel.
Great job, sir. Uh, let's just a couple things I'll pass this down to you, but the OSU Extension Office sent a letter about their um. Oh, it's gonna be their annual.
Yeah.
Meeting, have you guys received that already?
Yes.
About the date and time.
Yeah.
And they do have that on their.
They do not.
Oh, I'll give you that copy so you know the date and time.
And then.
That's different than the annual meeting. This is the. Uh. Let's see, they're, they are, yeah, they're August meeting, they're gonna be held August twenty seventh, that's six P M at. Uh, Dave's Emily, uh, Meacham Spa.
Oh, yeah, that's.
There's a dinner. So you're, you're invited to. So I'll send that down.
Eight twenty seven, right?
Yes.
I got it on mine.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz I think they probably want to let me know.
On my, yeah.
They want to know if we're gonna attend, I think, so I'll give that to Penny. And then um, just the Ackerman Nature Preserve is just sending a, kind of their newsletter. Like, was it last year Bill or the year before, the commissioners provided twenty five thousand in funding to the Ackerman Nature Preserve.
And Kathy Daniels was a big part of that too.
Yes, and so this is just kind of like a update on where they are from paying your report to their donors and supporters. So I'll pass that down for you, each of you to look at as well, then. Um. And I think. That's all I have for you today.
Barry, you wanna share about the, yeah, pub barns?
Yeah, uh. Mister Paul Hodum's name was previously on the swine barn at the fairgrounds. With the new swine barn being built, his name was replaced on the new uh swine barn. So, uh. Some of his loyal friends and people from the uh. Ag museum got together and uh had talked to me and went to the uh fair board. And uh, the fair board and those folks have agreed to. Come up with a. A placard or like a memorial placate to go on the. Side of the new swine barn, uh, sit down. Talking about his contributions and his acting, so I'll be going out there tomorrow at seven. They're gonna try to figure out what they want to put on that plaque and how big they want it to be. But I think it'll be something like an Ross, Ross and Old Memorial, yeah, like a, you know, bronze, black at the. Well, uh, face, but I think that made everybody happy.
Just that I attended the uh Mount Vernon Music and Arts Festival and it was great job, Trina, Trina always does a phenomenal job and that. A lot of great things happened, there were great community event, brought in people from the outside, largest attendance we've ever had, Craig Morgan concert. Super well attended, so I think it's a great thing for the community and brings people into our lovely town, the term, and so. And a pie auction and um. Wood, wood uh crafts and all kinds of amazing things, and so it's a fun event, so I was glad to attend that, and I want to thank the. Um, convention and Bureau, uh, Visitors Bureau, they're helping with these things, but to learn out, market it.
And then uh, we wanna, you know, do a couple shout outs to the, the Danville community for their new football field, it's um. Quite an effort, a community effort that, that brings a great football field into the area and. We, we know that this will uh definitely secure a championship game for them uh in the near future.
Or at least a playoff game there.
Get a couple of those along, and then uh the Mount Vernon football team is selling donuts this weekend, or this Friday actually. From nine to twelve or nine to eleven, uh, donuts will go quick, which is what the players want, they'll be out there, but they're. Maz's Snyder's Funeral Home, Pack Meal, Subway down to Square and Columbia Elementary School. Uh, and then uh simply an update for uh our back entrance to this facility, moving right along and. And hopefully uh that will be done here in the next uh couple months. And so we are also doing uh the renovation down at uh Energy, down to. Harton Park, used to be called Cooper's, for Knox County Transit, so that's moving along. So we're excited about getting those things uh done, uh, we trust everyone will have a good week. And then this includes our meeting, I'll have a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
So we stay in adjourn, thank you.